All right, good evening, board members, Mr. Santos, district staff. The time is 6:06 PM. This is the 17th day of December 2014. I call this meeting of the United Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Veliz, could you please call roll?
Sure. Mr. President, Mr. Judd Gilpin?
Present.
Mrs. Lisa Oliveros?
Present.
Mr. Roberto Molina?
Ricardo Molina.
Ricardo Molina, sorry.
I'm forgetting my name. Uh, here, present.
Mr. Juan Roberto Ramirez?
Present.
Mr. Javier Montemayor?
Present.
And myself, Ramiro Veliz, the third, present. Have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, and a moment of silence, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisive.
Once again, we have a quorum of board members present, and this meeting has been duly posted. And for the record, we have Mr. Ricardo Rodriguez also present here. This meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Agenda item number three, board announcements. Does any board member wish to make an announcement on any issue? Mr. Veliz?
I have the call.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No, sir. Oh, well, yes, you just reminded me, I forgot. I'm running a little bit late, so I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and well, if I don't see you all, also a Happy New Year. I don't think we're gonna have a meeting until after that, so I want to wish all the staff and all of you, parents, students, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. God bless.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you for being here, and we're glad to be here with you all. And the kids are being recognized, they're well worth it to be recognized, and as I'm talking, I want to wish you all a very, very, very Merry Christmas, with you all and your family. And don't forget always to give a little token under the tree for the man that brought us here, little baby Jesus. Now just think of getting an Xbox, or Wii, or this and that. Remember first, put in a little something, baby Jesus. Merry Christmas, God bless you, and we're gonna be united.
Mr. Gilpin?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, myself, and it's been a good year so far. For all of our staff members here, we appreciate everything you've done this year, and keep up the good work. Thank you all very much.
Mrs. Oliveros?
Likewise, I'd like to just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope that everybody returns safely in January.
I'd just like to thank everybody, and I'm honored to be here, serving you, and I'd like to wish all the kids a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, especially the parents also, our staff, our superintendent, everybody united, like every year for the past 19 years. Like I said, it's been an honor, and thank you for being here, and congratulations to all the kids doing such a great job, and all the schools, and the teachers, and the administrators, and everybody. Thank you, and God bless you, united.
Before we move on, I'd like to also congratulate all the students who are being recognized this evening. Congratulations to the parents. Again, without your support, these achievements could not have been accomplished. Also want to recognize a few people. Yesterday, we, Spark Middle School students, United Middle School students, and Travelman Middle School students were treated, 53 of those students were treated to a gift giveaway by Commissioner John Gallo, by Judge-elect Pepe Salinas, and myself. These 53 needy students were taken to Target. They were provided with $50 gift cards, and they did some shopping for themselves, and for their parents, and for their families. Target was outstanding, they helped out tremendously. From there, they were treated to a lunch at Golden Corral, and it was really impressive to see the smile on these students' faces. And I want to thank everybody from Mr. Conceco with Golden Corral, to the United staff that helped put this together, to the Transportation Department that worked to get these students to and from their schools, the principals, the counselors, everybody that had a hand in this. It was really good, it was a very good thing to see these kids smile, and it's that time of the year. So, with that being said, I also want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We won't see each other until, God willing, until January, so...
United Middle and Los Obispo Middle sponsored El Cenizo Community Center where I work, the kids of Rio Cenizo, and I'd like to thank, they went out there and took gifts. Every year, they take to the kids at the community center, and they go out of their way to help the kids. I just want to thank the principal from the Obispo Middle School and United Middle for supporting our kids out there, and whoever wants to help, they can always call me there at El Cenizo Community Center, and if you want to support our kids, or any other community center. Thank you all.
Right. Agenda item 3A, report on completion of the required continuing education training for school board members. As of January 1st, 2014 through November 30th, 2014, the following school board members have received the following hours. Javier Montemayor, 15.75; Roberto Ramirez, 38.75; Mr. Ricardo Molina Senior, 15.5; Judd Gilpin, 27.25; Ricardo Rodriguez, 13.25; Ramiro Veliz III, 17.75; and obviously, Ms. Oliveros is still pending, so... For the record, those are the hours that have been reported for continued education for our school board members. We don't need any action on this, correct?
No, no.
Agenda item number four, recognitions. A, Eagle Ford Excellence Awards?
Yes, Mr. Roberto, members of the board, obviously, the audience, as you can see, we have a full auditorium here. A lot of students, a lot of staff are going to be recognized today, and I also want to thank the parents for the support that they give our students. It's because of the parents that your children are very successful at our campuses. If the board can join me at the front to be able to recognize our students and staff.
And now we're ready to begin with the recognitions part of the board meeting. At this time, board members and our superintendent, Santos, there's a very special recognition we would like to present to you this evening. It's a special award honoring our oil and gas program here in the district, the first ever in the state of Texas. Let's give that a big round of applause. This is a wonderful award United ISD receives. Let me go ahead and read a little bit of information about it. The South Texas Energy and Economic Roundtable announced United ISD as the recipient of the first 2014 Eagle Ford Excellence Impact Award for its leadership in creating a first of its kind program for students interested in oil and gas production careers. The award was presented to the district on November 6th in San Antonio. United ISD set the standard for the state of Texas by establishing multiple programs and partnerships to expand opportunities to the Eagle Ford Shale for UISD students. To date, 35 senior-level high school students completed a one semester certificate in petroleum technology at Laredo Community College during our inaugural year, which was 2013 and 14, and 33 students were certified in hydrogen sulfide gas. Additionally, 147 freshman students completed Principles of Gas and Oil Production Systems. Judges for the 2014 Eagle Ford Excellence Award included representatives from CPS Energy, San Antonio Water System, and the University of Texas at San Antonio. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a big round of applause for this groundbreaking program here at United ISD, this wonderful award that was presented to our district. Board members and Mr. Santos, it was our associate superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Alicia Carrillo, who's our director for career and technology programs, and Ms. Dolores Bala, who's our executive director for high school education. They especially wanted to present this award to each of you tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, parents, teachers, students, and community members. It is with great pride that we would like to acknowledge UISD scholars tonight. These students have excelled in their studies while enrolled in our high schools, and they truly exemplify scholarship and academic excellence. These students have taken the college board's Advanced Placement exams, rigorous college level content-specific assessments, which various colleges and universities consider in awarding college credit or advanced placement. As advanced placement student, may earn one of the following four distinctions. The designation of AP Scholar by having received grades of three or higher on three or more AP exams, or AP Scholar with Honor by earning an average grade of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and grades of three or higher on four or more of these exams, or AP Scholar with Distinction by earning an average grade of 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and grades of three or higher on five or more of these exams, or the designation of National AP Scholar for receiving an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. I now present to you the group of students, which includes from John V. Alexander High School. AP Scholar with Distinction, Elizabeth Arseniega, William Brown, Rebecca King, Jesús Ojeda Pacheco, Victor Padilla, Sofia Valdez. AP Scholars with Honor, Ramiro Castillo, Alejandro Gutierrez, Isaac Martinez, Allison Miller, Karina Palomino, Adely Perkins, Alma Pinto, Koshila Satchef, Alexa Villarreal. AP Scholars, Travis Allen, Brenda Arroyo, Justin Bencourt, Christina Cantú, Carlos Casas de León, Alexis Sepeda, Amanda Cervantes, Anna Cruz, Mia Deiano, Sofia Elizondo, Maria Flores, Andrea Fuentes, Mario García, Maribel Gómez, Mario González, César Guardiola, Lisa Wang, Mario Jiménez, Rebecca Kason, Priscilla Lugo, Yanelli Mireles, David Núñez, Argos Ortega, Robert Pérez, Alexis Rebelles, Lourdes Ruiz, Eduardo Salinas, Alejandro Spinelli, Miley Stelflu, Bell Formis, Hannah Torres, Luis Trevino, Cynthia Ortega, Mauricio Valdez, Zaid Valdez, Connor Wilkinson, and Telsi Samarrón. Congratulations to the AP Scholars from J.B. Alexander High School. Congratulations. AP Scholar with Distinction, Perla Canales, Katia Carmona, Maui Cervantes, Esteban Elizondo, Carlos Fresnillo, Daniel Méndez, Raúl Ramos, Aitlin Wagner, Cindy Wu. AP Scholars with Honor, Guillermo Díaz, Kevin Diez de Pinos, Jorge Solís. Our National AP Scholar, Daniel Méndez. Our AP Scholars, Viviana Aldaba, Najin Aldana, Jacob Belmares, Joanna Botelho, Carlos Castillo, Arturo Fernández, Guillermo Frausto, Darren García, Joseph, I'm sorry, Jesús García, Gregorio Garza, Ryan Hi, Abraham Magaña, Christel Mansías, Enrique Mejía IV, Joseph Monahan, Elker Morales, Eduardo Ramos, Enrique Rangel, Manuel Soriano, Armando Torres, Jesús Berlusco, Eirme Viejo, Melissa Villa, and Giovanni Sarceno. Congratulations to the AP Scholars from United High School. Congratulations. AP Scholars, Leslie Guzmán, Urivia Rodríguez, Amanda Sánchez, Joshua Teniente. Congratulations to our AP Scholars and their parents from United South High School. Students, teachers, and parents, thank you for your support. Good luck in all your future endeavors, and congratulations once again for setting the example of scholarship and academic excellence in our district.
Good evening, Mr. Santos, members of the board, and members of the audience. I am very pleased to present to you the first-place team at the Boosting Engineering Science and Technology Best Tournament, which took place... Which took place recently in San Antonio, Texas. The team consists of 45 ninth through 12th grade students enrolled in the Engineering Magnet at United High School. These students received the highest award given in this competition. The first-place award encompasses five areas of competition, which includes robotic head-to-head tournament, competing against 30 other teams, engineering notebook, marketing presentation, exhibit and interview, and spirit and sportmanship. Placing first at the best tournament qualified United High School to compete in the tri-state competition against 60 of the top schools in Texas, New Mexico and Oklahoma, ranking sixth place overall. Students were also awarded first-place award in the form and factor for having the best functional robot design. Advisors for the team at United High School Magnet teachers are Laura Rodríguez, Brian Pilton, and Jorge Martinez. Also advertising the team is Eduardo Beatty, who was a graduate of the Engineering Magnet and now has an engineering degree from Texas A&amp;M University in College Station. We are extremely proud of our students and their advisors. Congratulations, guys, congratulations. Keep up the good work, guys. Congratulations, you make us proud.
It is with great pride tonight that we recognize several teams and individuals for their outstanding performance this past fall, and we'll start off our recognitions with our first team, the United High School Lady Longhorn volleyball team. The Lady Longhorns had a great year, another great year. This year, they are the district 29-6A champions, bi-district champions, and area finalists. Head coach is Letizia Longoria, principal, Mr. Alberto Lemana, and assistant principals. Again, the Lady Longhorns finished as district champions, bi-district champions, and area finalists, and this is the second year in a row that they are bi-district champions and area finalists. Congratulations, Lady Longhorns. with our football teams. This year, we're recognizing the United High School football team as district 29-6A co-champions, bi-district champions, area champions, and regional finalists. Congratulations, United Football Team. Head coach, Ben Sanchez, and assisted by staff, principal, Mr. Alberto Lemana. This is the sixth year in a row that a UISD team has advanced to the third round of the football playoffs, and this is... And United High School has advanced to the third round four of the last five years. This year, the LBJ Wolves had the history-making season. For the first time in school history, the Wolf Pack qualified for the UISD State Football Playoffs, and for the first time in school history, the Wolf Pack are district 29-6A co-football champions. Head coach, Walter Villas-Gord, and his staff, principal, Mr. Marcos Salazar. Our next team recognition is to the United South Boys Cross Country Team for their excellent season and qualifying as a regional participant in San Antonio. Only the top three cross-country teams advanced to the regional. The United South Boys had an excellent season, and were one of the qualifiers. Congratulations, United South Panthers, on a great, great season. Also in cross-country being recognized tonight, the John V. Alexander Girls Cross Country The Girls Cross Country Team is also one of the top teams in our district, and by being so, they qualified for the regional in San Antonio. Congratulations, ladies, on another great season. Principal, Mr. Ernesto Sambalval, and his staff, pit coach, Louis Mendoza. Principal, Mr. Ernesto Sandoval, and his staff, pit coach, Louis Mendozza. The next group that we'd like to recognize are the Cross Country Individual State Qualifiers. Once you have the district meet, you go to the regional meet, and only the top ten in the regional meet qualify for the state meet in Austin. Individual state qualifiers are, from United High School, Pedro Sepulveda; from United South High School, Gusto Hidrogo; from United South High School, Abby Madrigal; and from J.B. Alexander High School, Bianca Martinez. Head coach at United, Eddie Gonzalez; head coach at United South, Juan Salazar; head Congratulations, UISD Individual State Cross Country Qualifiers. And last but certainly not least, in teen tennis, congratulations to the six consecutive time defending district champion, J.B. Alexander High School. As district champion, Alexander qualified for the Area Tennis Tournament, which is where they go up against District Thirty in the Valley, and Alexander came away as the Area Champions. Congratulations, Alexander Tennis. Congratulations, Alexander Tennis.
Okay, agenda item five. At this time, we move on to the consent agenda items. Is there a motion with regard to the consent agenda items as listed A through H?
Yes, Mr. President, both the Business Instruction Committee met last week on Tuesday, December the ninth, and make a motion to approve item A through letter H. I believe there might be some additions on letter G. Mr. Sulega?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, there are four additional discretionary funds requests that we'd like to be considered in this motion. There's one from Antonio Gonzalez Middle School, campus principal Patricia Rooney, sponsored by Ricardo Rodriguez to purchase scoreboard for the gym for $2,500. Request from United South High School, principal Adriana Ramirez, sponsored by Ricardo Rodriguez, be used to purchase Elmos for $1,500. Department of Information Technology, executive director Hector Perez, board member Ricardo Rodriguez sponsoring it, for the purchase of two mobile computers with Internet access in an effort to increase attendance at different campuses by utilizing online truancy forms. This request is for $3,000. There's a request from San Antonio Elementary School, principal Laura de los Santos, co-sponsored by Mr. Ricardo Molina Senior, and Mr. Ramiro Velis III, $5,000 each, for grade-level printers, garden, and board members honor science initiative, classroom set novels, one charter bus, and smart TVs, a total request of $10,000. And another request, United South High School, principal Adriana Ramirez, sponsored by Ricardo Rodriguez, monies will be used to purchase a golf cart for United South High School. This cart will assist security and administration with security and safety at the campus. Total request is $3,000.
Okay, with that being said, zero.
I make a second motion.
Second to Mr. Velis's motion. We have a motion of the second for agenda item five, A through H. Is there any discussion with regards to any of these items? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hands. All those opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number six, items for individual consideration, six A, approval of board minutes for the month of November 2014. Is there a motion regarding the approval of board minutes for November 2014 as presented?
Someone?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item six B, approval of donations. Is there a motion regarding the approval of donations as presented?
Yes, Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, it is recommended that the board trustees graciously accept the following donations, and they will be attached to the minutes. We have two donations over $1,000. One is United South High School Model UN Club receive a donation of $1,000 from Adolfo Ramos and Juanita Ramos, and $1,000 from BBBVA Campus Bank, Alejandro Benavides. Second donation is from United South High School FFA Group, receive a donation of $1,000 from the Gulf Coast, Holly. And then we have several small donations under $1,000 for a grant total this month of $4,900 that we graciously accept, and want to thank these people for helping our schools.
All right. As presented, is there a motion regarding the approval of donations?
I'll make a motion to approve.
The motion and a second. Any discussion with regards to any of the donations? All those in favor, signify by raising your hands. All those opposed, motion passes. Item six C, approval for action to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Webb County through its Head Start program to designate various UISD campuses as relocation campuses where Head Start children can be picked up by parents in case the Head Start centers are closed due to an emergency.
Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, this is a MOU, as the agenda item suggests. It's just in case of an emergency, that something would happen, the Head Start centers would have on the... Let's see, you have it on page 104 of your materials, the Head Start Center and then the relocation campus that would be made available to buy UISD to Webb County.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor.
I will see.
unanimously, one abstention, Ms. Oliveros. Motion passes. Item six D, approval of guaranteed maximum prize for design construction of ninth-grade prototype for United High School and United South High School. Turn ahead. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, Mr. Santos, Mr. Cruz, and members of the audience. We bring to you this night the proposal for line-up construction for the guaranteed maximum prize for both United South High School and United High School ninth-grade campuses. We've been working, of course, with the committee for the last seven, eight months, developing plan specifications. They're about seventy-five, eighty percent complete. So, contractor was able to provide a detailed cost proposal, guaranteed maximum prize, meaning everything is turnkey included within these facilities. We reviewed the plans specifications, all the construction documents are in compliance with state guidelines for facilities for secondary schools. As well as UIS, we have a list of standardized facilities, educational programs that are required, and we developed that into a design criteria manual. We reviewed item by item, everything is within the project scope as presented. We presented this item yesterday at the bond oversight committee meeting, and unanimously they recommended to the board trustees approval for both GMPs. Basically, just to touch on some brief items that are included on this guaranteed maximum prize, each campus will be a 1,200-student-capacity facility for ninth graders. That's fully furnished and equipped with academic programs that were developed by curriculum and instruction. We followed that educational specifications, and it was designed in a manner that resulted in about 200,000 square feet. And to sum it up, we have thirty classrooms for academic, we have six science labs, five computer labs, we have separate FFA building, art labs, general computer labs. All of the facility standards are met, masonry reconstruction, concrete, following everything that we built in the past. There were some enhancements over previous facilities, for example, exterior lighting is all LED. We do have the highest quality of materials throughout the building. One item I'd like to present tonight is just some brief site plans of the campuses for your information. You have United South High School, ninth grade. Both campuses, actually, all four ninth-grade campuses will be exactly the same. It's a prototype, and they will be built in the same manner. The configuration of the site is slightly different based on the properties, but in spite of that, we're following the same pattern for traffic circulation, for parking areas, bus pickup drop-off areas, soccer or athletic fields, as well as all of the interior areas of the building. The United ninth-grade campus is on the next slide. We have the same building configuration, different site. We do have two entrances for good access into the property, one from International Boulevard and one from the northern street that is under construction. This is a schematic of all the floor plans developed by the architects, dividing all the areas, academic areas, of course, the bulk of the facility, academic areas as well as career technology. We do have a large cafeteria for 300 students with a stage, full-service, fully-equipped kitchen, the library with computer stations. We do have two gymnasiums and the dance studio, as well as weight room, athletic areas, six BIM labs and art labs on the lower area. All of the support areas, administrative areas are located within the main entrance of the building. Second floor, we have general academic classrooms, as well as all the science department, all the science lab will be located on the second floor. Within every area, we have support facilities for instruction, for teachers, and administrators also on the second level. To some perspectives of the elevation of the new school, the bottom part of the slide shows actually the front view of the campus as you approach the facility. This will be the main entrance. Will be designed in a way that the first access for visitors or parents will be through the security stations, then go through all of the access control procedures. A two-story building with a clear story to allow plenty of daylight into the facility. That was one of the committee's recommendations, to have it into a very open concept type of facility. Here's another view of the front entrance of the building. As you walk into the central common areas of the building, we'll have gathering spaces. It's very wide and sufficient space for good student control and management and supervision, either from the first or second floor. And if you're at the second floor level, that perspective shows the view into the... And all the perimeter corridors and areas are all classrooms, so it's very easy to supervise throughout the facility throughout the day. Another perspective of the interior areas. And at this time, the administration would like to recommend the approval of the guaranteed maximum prize submitted for United South High School ninth grade. We have an amount of $33,124,192, and this includes a contingency of $500,000. For United ninth grade, we have an amount of $33,124,743 with a contingency allowance of $650,000. Both amounts are within the budget that was allocated for construction. This is just the actual brick and mortar. We do have already a contract for the architect for the design under the design-build contract. That was a per-budget for furniture, equipment, and technology, but this was what was allocated and approved. Any questions?
I have a question. This is, I think we had a discussion with Mr. Juniga earlier. We went to the voters during the bond election. What was it that we were telling the voters that a ninth-grade campus was going to cost?
At the time, we had a budget of, that was approved, $38,900,000, inclusive of furniture, equipment. Within that amount, when we broke it down, we had the $33,127,000 for construction.
This $33 million is only for construction?
Yes, sir.
It's not the supplies and the equipment and the furniture, correct? We have about $5 million?
That is correct. We still have $5 million set aside for the furniture, equipment, technology.
Will we be able to get to that $38 million? Will we be able to maintain that $38 million figure that we gave the public with what is pending? Can you...
Yes, sir.
Will you be able to furnish and equip?
Absolutely, yes, sir. That is, our focus will be to maintain the campuses within that budgeted amount. Normally, the biggest obstacle is the actual construction, which is the ninety percent of the cost, and we're there within the budget. The furniture, equipment, technology we have there, we have sufficient budget to properly provide everything that is needed for us.
This is the maximum price, so potentially it could be a little lower somewhere.
Yes. Towards the construction, there'll be the construction buyouts of contracts, and like, similar to United High School, there was a balance at the end that comes back to the district. There are potential savings for the project. Just one last item as far as the schedule. United South High School, they're ready to begin operations next month if the board selects to approve the guaranteed maximum prices. January 2015, they would begin construction. We've already started clearing the site in anticipation of getting them started there, but they would begin actual construction. The property has been planted and recorded, ready to obtain a building permit. The completion date for United South High School would be August of 2016, ready to open the fall of 2016, a year and a half from now. But on United ninth grade, probably they will start about March, but they're telling us, they'll face it in between March to April of next year. The anticipated completion date for United ninth grade is December 2016. So, they're gonna try to see the improvement there, but that would be the time where United ninth grade would be relocated to a new facility. A lot of things are contingent also on the development that are really beyond our control, like the extension of International Boulevard and all this outside improvements by the developer.
Any other questions? Oliveros?
I'm good, I'm good.
All right. I get a motion to approve... Well, I make a motion for the approval of the guaranteed maximum price, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gary is ready to start.
Renewal slash extension of delinquent tax contract with the law firm of Alarcon and Science.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the tax contract with the law firm of Alarcon and Science to read as follows. Under paragraph three of section fourteen, I'd like to delete the language that states the firm will incur or reimburse all costs associated with the current tax year statement, February delinquent tax statement, and section thirty-three point zero seven notice to be mailed in May. I'd also like to amend section fourteen as follows. The firm acknowledges the district's desire to create scholarship programs for students who have exhibited outstanding academic achievement and exemplary accomplishments. The firm, at its discretion, is encouraged to contribute to the district's scholarship programs, school fundraisers, and other programs aimed at awarding its students for their individual achievements. Under section twenty of the tax contract, I'd like to amend it as follows. Deleting the date of August 31st... Deleting the date of August 31st of 2015 as the expiration date and inserting the date of August 31st of 2019 in lieu thereof, and it should read as follows. This contract is for the term beginning on September the first of 2011 and shall expire on August 31st of 2019, unless sooner terminated, renewed, or extended as provided herein. Unless sixty days before expiration, the district upon proper resolution, or the firm notifies the other in writing, that it does not wish to continue this contract beyond the then-existing term, including renewals or extensions thereof, this contract shall be automatically extended for successive two-year terms without further resolution from the Board of Trustees. If at any time during the term of this contract or any renewals or extensions hereof, the district determines that the firm's performance is, under this contract, is unsatisfactory, the district shall notify the firm in writing of the district's determination. The notice from the district shall specify the particular deficiencies that the district has observed in the firm's performance, and the firm shall have sixty days from the date of the notice to cure any such deficiencies. If at the conclusion of the sixty-day remedial period, the district remains unsatisfied with the firm's performance, the district upon proper resolution may terminate this contract effective thirty days after the firm's remedial period. Whether this contract expires or is terminated, the firm shall be entitled to prosecute and reduce to judgment any tax suits, applications for tax warrants, or bankruptcy claims pending on the expiration date or termination date, or an additional six months after expiration or termination. The district agrees that the firm shall be compensated as provided by section sixteen, or any base tax, penalties, and interest, and costs collected in the pending matters during the six-month period. That's my motion.
Motion?
Second.
Motion in the second, and just, I'd like to make a, uh, motion on top of your motion. I'd make a motion that, with all those, with all those modifications and extensions that Mr. Gilpin indicated earlier, that we, instead of the structured percentage rate that we, my motion is that we leave it at a 16 percent percentage rate. That's my motion.
Okay. Do I need to amend my motion? I think I do, right? Or not? And I'll amend...
Well, we have to take, I think we take my motion at first.
Yeah, it'll be your motion first. Yours is the amending motion, all right.
With regards to the percentage of, and, and adopting what Mr. Gilpin's motion to extend and modify is, we leave it at the 16 percent, including Mr. Gilpin's comments of the, the other modifications that he indicated. Any discussion on that? Favor? Motion passes.
Rachel Lee.
Ignorance.
All right. And just a quick note for the record, this will begin upon the expiration of the initial contract, which is on, or you want it to begin immediately?
It would begin on the expiration of the contract. I've got all the language here, as I just read it, I'll pass it to you.
Item number seven, closed session. Board would now adjourn to close session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. A, 551.071, consultation with board's attorney, discussion regarding superintendent's duties and responsibilities. B, 551.074, discussion of personnel or to hear complaints against personnel. 551.076, considering the deployment specific occasions for implementation of security personnel devices. A, Student Activity Fund Elementary Schools, A1, A2, Student Activity Funds, Middle and High Schools, Athletic Gate receipts, Webb County and Cedar Radio Utility Buildings, vendor membership cards, facility overtime audit and status, ongoing audits. The time is 7:07:06, and we should be back in about an hour. Agenda item number eight, time is 8:02, we're reconvening from closed session. There is no action take on any of the items discussed in closed session. I'll move to agenda item number nine, make a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor for adjourn? Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.